Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Lyon.
Here.
Councilmember Shipley.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. We'll now open up to public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda? You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. World Health Organization scientific studies warn cigarette smoking will increase your chance of cancer. Also warns that exposure to asbestos in buildings will increase your chance of cancer. Scientific studies also warn that children that live in close proximity to traffic fumes and traffic dust increases their chance of cancer. For all three of these, risk increases with the length of exposure to the harm. We see daily on TV the risk rise of cancer in children like leukemia. Florida Park Drive has over 8,000 cars per day and 500 trucks per day just 60 feet from children's bedroom and 80 feet from children that play on the Holland Park basketball courts. We recently saw that the sheriff's office was able to move to escape the harm that they were receiving from getting sick in a building. Where is the safe haven for the children of Florida Park Drive? What is a child's health really worth to the city? ITT created a non-residential intersection, Palm Coast Parkway and Palm Harbor Parkway, for the exchange of traffic between the two parkways and for the purpose to keep traffic out of residential neighborhoods. Rather than using this exchange point and using proven traffic common methods used by other cities to keep thoroughfare traffic out of the residential neighborhoods, turn lanes were added on to Florida Park Drive to move traffic off of the parkways onto the residential area and make it a thoroughfare exchange of traffic between two parkways. It's not about pushing traffic into other neighborhoods. It's about using the parkway intersection as intended and using proven traffic common methods to keep residential neighborhoods safe from being used as thoroughfares. Florida Park Drive is the only residential neighborhood that I know of that the city has insisted with increasing the traffic in the neighborhood. According to FDOT now, Florida Park Drive has over 4,000 more cars than Old Kings Road and same with Palm Harbor Parkway. We really need somebody in the city to take a look at this and fix this horrific area. It's the children's health that we're talking about. What is a child's health worth to the city of Palm Coast? Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Next speaker.
Good morning, Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. My first issue is we have some defective sprinkler heads on Belt Hair Parkway where they're actually shooting water and hitting the windshields of the cars. Last Monday, I was traveling at 4:45 in the morning and got whacked. I thought I was going to a car wash. Never expected a sprinkler head to be hitting the windshield of the car. I immediately got home later in that morning, called the city. The next day, they sent someone else to fix the sprinkler head. That was last week. Yesterday morning, 4:45 in the morning, I'm traveling north and just before Buddy Taylor Middle School, whack, get hit in the windshield with a sprinkler head again. Coming to the meeting this morning, coming up this side road over here, get just before the circle, and here's a sprinkler head shooting water into the street. We're going to have an accident. Somebody's going to have a serious issue and we're going to have a problem. My second complaint or concern, my favorite, code enforcement. Okay, here we go again. Okay, our section only consists of 67 miles, 12 miles a day. That's all they've got to cover. The R-section's starting to look like the hood. Okay, I've called numerous times. The code enforcement official has been out. The issue gets worse and worse. Approximately a month ago, we had a major issue on Riviera Estates where the garbage was from the garage door to the street. It took five days after code enforcement was there for Waste Pro to finally come in and pick up the garbage. I called yesterday because there's three properties in the R-section. One's got furniture out there since Sunday. A house three doors down from me has got a refrigerator with the doors still on it. Okay, garbage is all over the place. It's really starting to look like the R-section, the hood. Now, what I'd like to do is, we had a meeting with code enforcement. I got a one-on-one lesson about code enforcement, but the issue still continues. So maybe now what we need to do is have a meeting. We'll do a drive-through. We'll get everybody together and we'll go through the R-section and we'll see all the stuff that's wrong in the R-section. And then we can get the R-section back to the section that it believes it should be because I promise you that if we drove through any other section of the city, we may or may not find the same problems, but we live in the R-section, so fix it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Mr. Carr, thank you for your comments. About for the sprinkler systems, if you can make sure the public works is monitoring them.
With all we have and people driving in the medians and everything, it's ongoing. But our goal is always have them fixed within 24 hours, if not less.
And as far as code enforcement issues, I'm sure that we have Ms. Grossman in the audience that she's been taking notes and will look into the matter as discussed by public comment.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. We'll now move to the approval of the minutes of the City Council 2019 of June, 2018, June 19th business meeting and 2018 July 10th workshop. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Public hearings and ordinance on first read. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Chapter 44 Traffic and Vehicles Article 2, Stopping, Standing, and Parking. By adding a new section 4437(c) and relettering the existing subsection 4437(c) to add an additional section to clarify parking prohibited in certain areas and revise the amount of the penalty, amending Article 5 Boards, Commissions, and Committees subdivision 2 Civil Citation System by adding a violation for handicap parking to provide for a penalty in civil citation for violating handicap parking. This ordinance provides for qualification conflicts, severability, and effective date, Mayor.
Mayor, City Council, this is ordinance that you requested after hearing from both sheriffs daily and some residents about needing our code updated. So our attorney has accomplished that. Probably the two main goals here was to make it consistent with state law and then also to grant the sheriff's request, and that is make a civil citation, in other words, like a parking ticket versus a state moving citation where the deputy actually has to witness the person being in the car or parking or wait for him to come out. So we've accomplished that goal. The sheriff has indicated his support for this. After their review, they've added one section that we supported, and that is to make it very clear that if you have a handicap sticker or placard from another state, that that also would obviously be acceptable here in Palm Coast and Florida as allowed by state law. So we added that one little section to make that very clear that you don't just have to have a Florida sticker. So with that, after public comment, we believe it's ready for approval of first reading.
Council, any questions or discussion before opening to the public? Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Two? Please do so at this time.
Jack Allen, Palm Coast. There's always a good way of doing those things where you really get into where the public knows what's happening. Tow the cars away.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any comments? Mr. Carroll's comments about towing the vehicles away?
Yeah, that would be up to the sheriff, I guess. I don't know if it's allowed by law.
Yeah, it is permitted. This Florida statute's permitted. Our code would not permit that, but the Florida statute's permitted. I just want you to know also, Mr. Landen indicated that the sheriff has seen this and reviewed it. The sheriff's attorney as well has reviewed it and provided input as well. So I just want you to, the council to be aware that not just the sheriff, but the council for the sheriff has also taken and provided input and comments which have been incorporated.
Well, let me just say to Mr. Carroll's comments, you know, I agree frankly. I think there's nothing more egregious than parking in a handicap spot when one is not handicap. Having a father in a wheelchair from the age of 27 on, not being able to get out of a van without having handicap accessibility, and oftentimes driving around and driving around trying to get out of his vehicle. This is a very worthy discussion. I think it's long overdue. So I'm encouraged and I want to thank Councilmember Shipley for bringing it forward. Thank you.
And one thing I want to add, just so for the public to understand, one of the consequences of the changes is instead of, not only can we issue now citations in addition to uniform traffic citations, but the amount of these citations will be Class IV. So that's $250. So I know it's not the inconvenience of having your vehicle towed, but still, it is a financial burden that hopefully will catch people's attention. And that's, I wanted to say that so that, you know, put that on the record and out there since this is, we're on TV and this is being taped, that this, that now there's another tool that's available to the sheriff's office that I'm sure that they're going to be using. And it's not an insignificant penalty.
Maybe the sheriff can do one of his really fun videos.
Okay. Fair enough.
Parking bingo.
Parking bingo. Thank you. I appreciate it. Council, any other further discussion or comments?
I just think that we keep an eye on how this is going and get feedback from the sheriff as to effectiveness. I mean, if we still have a problem, then I'd say revisit the situation of the possibility of increasing the penalty to a tow. But at this point, I think that we've taken a step to address the problem and we should just watch to make sure it works.
Good point. Okay. All right. Nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval on first reading.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number three is a resolution, Community Development Block Grant, federal fiscal year 2018, Annual Action Plan.
Mayor, City Council, this is the annual requirement for our Community Development Block Grant. Not only developing an annual action plan, but also having a public hearing allow public input. Jose will give you a briefing on it so that prior to public participation and approval, hopefully today. Jose, take it from here.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Members of City Council. Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. As Mr. Landen mentioned, this is a required requirement of the CDBG program to have a public hearing on our annual action plan. And essentially, that annual action plan is the document that we forward to HUD, which alerts them of the activities that the city intends to undertake in the upcoming year using the CDBG dollars that we will receive for the upcoming fiscal year. As required by federal statutes, we've gone through a public vetting and public comment process. We held a public hearing, public workshop with our advisory board for the CDBG program, and that's the Citizens Advisory Task Force, and that was held on June 6. As required by federal statutes, we also made the document, our annual action plan, available for public comment for 30 days, and that was done for the period between June 8 and July 8. After public comment, we went to City Council last week at a workshop, and we are here today for the public hearing that is required. And adoption today would allow us to make any necessary adjustments based on comments received and submit that plan to HUD by the August 15 deadline. So after due public process and public comment, the recommendation, which comes from staff and the Citizens Advisory Task Force, are as follows, that we continue with the ongoing activities that we have been undertaking using CDBG funds. And that's one, to complete the Seminole Woods Neighborhood Multi-Use Path, to continue with the homeowner repair assistance, and that's again, financial assistance for home repairs, continue with the youth activities, that's our summer camp swim lessons and other recreational activities undertaken by our Recreation and Parks Department, starting that public service grants where we would make funding available to nonprofits through a grant process. And finally, the new activity that's been proposed, senior-oriented activities, similar to the youth activities, which is administered and provided by our Recreation and Parks Department. They will now undertake a senior-oriented program, and that could entail everything from a meal program, wellness program, educational program. So based on those findings, this is the proposed allocation for the upcoming year. The housing program would receive the bulk of the funds at about $250,673, about $175,000 for to complete the Seminole Woods Neighborhood Multi-Use Path. We will allocate the maximum 15% available of this year's allocation or upcoming year's allocation for public service, and that's a total of $76,000, and retaining about $5,000 for planning, admin, and the monitoring of these different programs. And that would be like advertisements for public hearings and continuing to sponsor the fair housing event that our Board of Realtors and other nonprofits provide annually. And so the total annual allocation for the upcoming fiscal year is about, is $506,673. And I will be happy to entertain any questions at this time.
Council, any questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Three? Please do so at this time.
Good morning, everybody. Mr. Neal, Palm Coast. It says FY '18. FY '18, I believe, ends 30 September this year. Is that correct?
Okay, well, you can finish your comments. I'll get your answers.
If it ends out in less than 60 days, how do you spend money that quickly when you're just now getting it approved? Shouldn't this be all FY '19 instead of FY '18? Because FY '18, you've got less than 60 days to spend half a million dollars if you can't spend it until you get approved by the City Council. How can you, I mean, I'm thinking this is more '19 than '18. So I'm confused on that.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
My name's Denise Calderwood, a citizen of Palm Coast, a proud citizen of Palm Coast before Palm Coast even existed as a city, and it was rural in 1976. So, well, '74, we were coming down. Interestingly enough, I have to thank Jose, very much so. I want to give you a round of applause because you actually listen to the citizens and so community calls. It's the first time that the city has done the right thing in a long time, okay, listening and adding senior programming, especially when the city uses Community Development Block Grant to support its own programs when they charge the city. So when you look at Palm Coast's budget overall, it does not make sense comparing whatever cities Mr. Landen uses as comparison cities and the staff, okay? Winter Springs, or Winter Park is the prime example. The, you know, what we spent for our Palm Coast Community Center, which we had owned for years, and everybody knows the history of that, was a YMCA at one time, and not using Community Development Block Grant money to support it, you know, is very frustrating. City of Winter Park has an $8 million community center, and it has two Olympic-sized swimming pools, two full-size gyms on land that they had to purchase, okay, you know, which is interesting. Plus, they have an amphitheater attached to it. So that's a great model city to follow because it actually even meets the economic components and demographics of Palm Coast. So Ormond Beach did, but we've way surpassed that in our budgeting and activities. But I want to again thank Jose, and that's why I'm here, because I'm glad that you've listened to the city, the city residents, and senior programming is just as important as youth programming. And I urge all of you, and Mr. Lyons, congratulations. Hopefully, you'll add some logic to this commission. We were hoping, you know, that others, new appointees would, or, you know, voted in, but apparently they're not looking at utilization reports. If you want to have an eye-opener, look at your utilization reports of the Palm Coast Community Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. If you can answer the question about the fiscal year?
I'm going to let Jose handle that.
Sure. That's the federal fiscal year, and federal fiscal years are typically, I guess the nomenclature is that it's at the beginning of the year, whereas when we say fiscal year 19, which is 1819, federal fiscal year, we'll use 2018, but that's really for 1819. So yes, this would be the allocation that will come to us in October 1 of 2018. So we do have a year to spend it beginning October 1.
Thank you.
So really, bottom line is, it comes in in 18, but we spend it in 19.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, council members, we'll move to the consent agenda. I was not at the workshop, so I'm requesting we poll item number four.
Mayor, you need to vote on the last resolution.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept resolution?
Move approval. Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Okay. Any other consent agenda items that any council member would like to see polled at Seeing none? Okay. I'm polling Agenda Item Number Four.
Right. You want to do that first, or you want to do the rest of the?
No. We'll do Agenda Item Number Four, and then I'll ask for approval of the consent agenda.
Super. This is the beginning of the design for the Recreation Center that the City Council talked about and asked that we look into for the, during your strategic action process, and this was one of your priorities. It also addresses some of the other items in our capital program, such as the trailhead there at Lehigh Trail. But I'll let Carl go through the details.
I've pulled up the presentation from the workshop that I'll go through today. It kind of runs through the process of the Recreation Center Master Plan proposal and how we got here. Back in March of this year, the Recreation and Park Facilities Master Plan was updated. We did an update, and in that, it identified a satellite recreation community center project. It was labeled as a multi-generational activity center at the time. It also identified potential to combine various projects to implement different elements of the master plan. Also in April of this year, City Council adopted additional priorities, and one of those was to evaluate town center and other locations within the southern part of the city with the potential to incorporate a future premier multipurpose recreation center that all generations are served. So with that information, staff put together a request for qualifications, and we advertised the project out to the public. There's a four-member employee team that was put together. We received eight proposals to the RFQ that was advertised. The top three were ranked and brought in for interviews, and after the interview process, the team selected Los Design as the top-ranked firm, and then we negotiated a scope and fee in the amount of $99,500 to provide services. Some of the services are to establish a program, put together a site master plan, do some preliminary design, do a financial feasibility analysis, and put together a project budget and implementation Kind of wanted to highlight some of the public process. The public will be very much involved in putting this whole project together. We're here today to get contract approval, but beginning in August, we'll have a public input meeting, a partnering meeting with various potential partners. There'll also be surveys, public surveys that will be issued. So basically, for about six weeks, the consultant will be going through an information gathering process as to what the community needs are, studying the demographics, taking input from public and various user groups and organizations. Then we will come back to council and present those findings to council. They'll help steer the direction of the program. And from there, we will then have a public design charade. So that's another opportunity for the public to come out, to provide input, to provide feedback. And once they get that feedback after that meeting, the consultant's going to refine the information, put together some various ideas and sketches, and then there'll be another public review meeting in November where they will get additional feedback and comments. And then from that meeting, they'll finalize the master plan and put together a presentation for council in December. And some of the deliverables that the consultant will put together is that programming report that's going to identify the various programs, a site master plan drawing, a conceptual building floor plan, a financial pro forma report that's going to look at not only the construction costs, but the operational costs and the potential revenue for various activities and programs that may be offered, put together a project budget and a schedule for design and construction, and a 3D rendering of what the facility could look like. That covers the process.
You know, so I was not here during the workshop. I certainly appreciate this presentation. I have a couple thoughts. First, you know, a project of this scale and magnitude is going to take a tremendous amount of capital dollars upfront, obviously, to pay for it. City Palm Coast has a policy that we pay as we go. We do not go into long-term debt in our capital projects, and I think that's wise. I think frankly, this is very premature as far as spending $100,000 for a facility that possibly, when we do have the amount of money that it would take to construct, we would have perhaps a different thought process than what would be wise to be placed in that type of facility. So I don't necessarily understand the logic of presenting it and doing it this way and spending money to sit on a shelf maybe for a few years, maybe for several years, before we would have the funding to do that. And on the other end of things, I mean, government often doesn't foresee the operational costs that goes into these types of facilities. We certainly have a Parks and Rec Department that we are growing, and we're growing it strategically as we add additional programs to what we see as a need in the community. But I am not in favor of spending $100,000 of our money today without having a true understanding of how we would generate enough revenue to build a facility and pay for it in cash. So I need to have a better understanding of, especially as a dialogue from this council to say, you know, are we looking at just putting sales tax dollars in year after year? Are we looking at different revenue sources and what that would look like? And if not, we have to be realistic in those conversations. So that would have been my comments at the workshop. I'm hoping to hear other comments from our council before we open up to the public and have a conversation about how we proceed with this.
I agree. I think it was, it was early because we don't know what kind of money we'll be spending just to give back something that we are then going to have meetings with the public and find out what we're going to do. But I'm concerned that it was on the consent agenda. It just seemed like it was something that shouldn't have been on the consent agenda to begin with.
Ms. Calderwood, please do not speak out. This is a public meeting. Thank you.
So I was concerned about that also, but I agree 100%.
And I agree. It should not have been on the consent agenda. It needs to be in the public. I was not at the meeting, and frankly, I needed to hear this presentation, so.
I concur. I think it was putting the cart before the horse before we talked about funding sources, but also the potential budget for something we would want to build because that really varies the potential. varies the potential plans, whether we're building a ten million dollar facility or not.
I just wanted to know if we have a timeframe in a, in a long-term plan of when we thought this might start construction. It sounds like Mayor's, I mean, I take the point very strongly that if we don't, I don't want this thing to sit on a shelf for years either. I'm sort of under the assumption that we had a plan of when we thought we would be able to start this. Do we have that information? I'll leave that to staff.
Okay. I guess my, my comments echo the rest of what I'm hearing from the council. One point, though, that I am a little concerned about, and we could address it at another meeting, is my understanding, because I was troubled by the number first, and then the scope of work for the consultant. And what I have found from talking with staff is that a portion of this, and I don't know how big a portion, is the work that would be necessary to satisfy the FDOT and Florida Power and Light as to the Lehigh Trailhead and the improvements that we are, at least in my mind, committed to make in that area, and that some design work and coordination with FPL and FDOT is going to be required to make that a reality. So, you know, I, the other part of it that troubled me a little was that the consultant was offering the, the financial analysis as sort of an add-on by another consultant. And, and obviously, how we pay for a facility of this scope is paramount, in my mind. I mean, aside completely from the part of whether we build it or not, but whether we do is largely dependent on whether we have the money to do it, in addition to the other priorities that we have for stormwater maintenance and upgrades and, you know, and things like that. So I, I would like to see from staff, not necessarily at this meeting, whether this is the consultant we need, or whether there's some other process we can go through to move the Lehigh Trailhead project along. I'd hate to see that get swept aside if, if the decision is made to postpone the work on the concept plan for the, for the community center.
Yeah, and let me just state that, I mean, our, you know, having it over at the south end of our town to offer that amenity to residents that necessarily aren't going to drive over to our multi-use facility in the north end of our town makes sense. Another part of it certainly is the discussion of the Lehigh Trailhead, which we need to address. The parking, when residents are parking across the street and walking or riding their bicycles across Bel Air, it's a safety issue, in my opinion. And restrooms are warranted at that facility as well. It's a highly utilized area of our community at the Trailhead. It's a great amenity. So I definitely want to make sure we're, we're looking at that and planning accordingly for, for that portion of it. But I also think we have to have a discussion when we're going through master plans of parks and rec. I mean, we have a, an amenity, you know, in our tennis center that former council members made the investment, made the decision to invest a considerable amount of money to, to pay for very, very nice tennis courts. So, you know, at one point, I'd like for us to have the discussion on, on how we best utilize that facility, and I'm not sure we're utilizing it to its best of its ability at this time. You know, we, we have a lot of opportunity. There's a strong history of tennis in this community. It's one that we should all recognize and be proud of. We have a superstar in Riley Opelka, who happens to reside here part-time. His parents live here full-time. We will never see a junior Wimbledon champion in our lifetime ever again that resides here. So I'm not sure if we're necessarily marketing the facility as we could best utilize it. And, and for us to move forward in highlighting a recreational amenity that very few communities have at, at their back door, I'd like for us to address at one point on, on how to best utilize that facility. I think we've gotten our golf course better positioned in a way for our residents that enjoy that amenity, are utilizing it. I think it's made a lot more fiscal sense in the way we approach the hybrid approach. But I do think that tennis center out there is lingering a bit. You know, we have a portable trailer that's utilized as a pro shop right now. So I do think it made sense to, to look at this area as a whole comprehensively. But the fact of the matter is, as other council members have suggested, we have really big priorities that we need to address in this community, and stormwater is one that I really feel we need to solve. You know, we, we had some very high rain events this last year that has caused some impacts on our infrastructure and negatively impacted it. And the cost of improving that and maintaining that is astronomical. And I understand we're coming back with a comprehensive plan, and I want to make sure we're focusing on that. But I think we need to understand all of these issues collectively, and then have a discussion as a council on how we prioritize that spending and where those resources are going to go. So I'm not sure that, sitting here today, that I feel comfortable in spending a hundred thousand dollars without an actual timeline of how these, this revenue that would generate it, how it would be earmarked for a facility this scale and this scope. And if we're talking about portioning it out and phasing it out, that's one thing. But I, I would like, as other council members have suggested, to also ensure, and maybe we put that on the citizen survey, is, is what we really, what the residents would like in this type of amenity if the city were to, to move forward with it. So that's my thought process. Mr. Lannan, if you want to address the comments of the council individually or as a whole, that would be very helpful.
Yes.
I do want to say that I want to appreciate all the work that went into making this proposal, and I think it's a good proposal. My only issue is that we may not be ready for it.
Yes, I, well, I concur a hundred percent. If you're not totally committed to this and need more information, then we need to put this on hold and, and provide you with more, more information. The concepts, a lot of what you're talking about, this included the, the trailhead, which we have a grant for, but we can separate that out and just do a site plan for that to fulfill the FDOT and, actually, there's an FPNL easement there to fulfill their requirements. That, nothing compared to a, a full-blown rec center. So that's, that's very easy. Mayor, your comments about tennis center, that was all part of, of the whole idea of a master plan, is that there's a, a number of possible amenities that could be, could be addressed in, in this one. We've, right now, in the middle of budget, and so staff has got this, and stormwater, there's still a lot of utility needs, other priorities out there. This was something we talked about during Strategic Action Plan, of putting together a concept here, but it makes a lot of sense to delay this and see how it fits into the big picture. And we're preparing a big picture for you with all these other infrastructure needs, et cetera. So the, one of the driving forces is this grant and the trailhead, but we'll carve that out so that we can make sure we don't lose the grant dollars, et cetera. And then present this to you, part of our capital improvement program during the budget here in August, you know, very shortly. And then you can decide where to go from there. But I, I concur. I think it's a good, good idea.
Okay. I will now open to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number four? Please do so at this time.
Good morning, Mayor, gentlemen. When I first heard about this project, I was adamantly opposed to it, but to some extent, I've changed my mind. I think it's, it would be helpful to have some type of design done prior to perhaps a detailed discussion by, by city council. Obviously, these are things that the residents would like to have, but without having any idea as to the cost and the scope and the timing of, of construction, the residents, it's really, it would be difficult for, for them and for you to be able to plan and discuss this in any detail. But I think that, that some type of design, perhaps not in the detail initially envisioned, would be, would be helpful to you and, and to, to the residents. Maybe this could be done with, with park and rec impact fees, which would not affect the tax rate in, in this particular year. But I see it difficult as to how you, as a council, can sit in and look at this, this type of a project without knowing what the residents might really like. In other words, you're looking at it before you get a chance, or the residents get a chance, to, to tell you what they would like to see. And perhaps this could be done piecemeal, one amenity at a, at a time, rather than doing them all at once. So, so I think that the idea in presenting something, or having something that the public can look at, before you discuss it, would, would be helpful. What I read in the newspaper is that the total project would cost in tens of millions of dollars. The mayor has suggested that, or that she believes that paying cash for a project of this scope makes sense, but I strongly disagree. I consider that almost to be physical irresponsibility. You're asking if, if you were to stockpile cash to pay for any tight, any massive amount of, of capital spending, what you're in essence doing is you're making the current residents and taxpayers pay for something that they might never enjoy. It seems to me that if you, if you are financing a project that lasts for many, many years, that it should be bonded over the, essentially, the useful life of that particular project so that all the residents, present and future, can enjoy and pay for that particular amenity. It makes no sense that residents today should pay for something that residents, in this magnitude, the residents in the future will, will enjoy. So I, I think that to proceed a little bit with some type of design study makes, makes some sense.
Next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
George Mayo, Palm Coast. I also agree with Mr. Peterson there. I don't think that this project or others necessarily shouldn't be thought of only if we have the cash. If people were to wait to buy a house while they're working and say, only when I build up the cash, that house may never come without a mortgage, something like this, I think we should look at that way. The other way, the end of the statement that Jose had was that all generational needs will be achieved or met. I think if you're going to go ahead with this, we should consider, offset part of the deal, just a room for a senior center. I've talked about this many people before this council have come up and said, we need a standalone senior center. It's good to have a basketball court, that's for the youth. You could have a swimming pool, that's good for others. Some seniors can't do that. To them, just going out and talking to people, that for them is fulfillment for the day for, for what they need, interaction with other people. That is very important mentally, to be able to talk with people, not necessarily to go to the community center for crochet class, or you have to go to knitting class. Some people just want to go there and play cards and enjoy others' company. What was the other thing? I'm sorry. Yeah, I just thought a senior center should, you know, definitely be included in this project, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Good morning. Mark Berta, Palm Coast. I came here with a whole list of things to kind of fight against the spending of the hundred thousand dollars. I want to commend the council for having the foresight to use our tax dollars wisely. Couple of things I read in the paper that made me want to come down this morning was the proposal was include many areas outside of sports, such as health, wellness, education, arts, music, lifestyles, community events, and more. I was under the understanding that was one of the reasons we expanded our community center, to handle just those. So I do want to say putting out the survey would be very good, and I think it should be done before we spend any money. I mean, we can do that within the city budgets. But also, I would like to see a question put on there, is how much somebody's willing to add to their taxes or sales tax or whatever to fund this? You know, I looked up, fifty-seven percent of the population of Palm Coast is age forty-five or more. And as we said, this was years in the making going forward. So that means most of us will be over fifty by the time this project would even be close to being completed. There's not going to be too many of us in that age group training for the Summer Olympics of twenty twenty-eight, or whatever that may be. So I want to commend the council for having the foresight to put this on. But I also agree with the other speakers that we do need some standalone and also look at maybe at some bond issues that can be done in the survey. We may be willing to spend the extra half a percent sales tax in Palm Coast to help fund this project, or an extra two cents on a gallon of gasoline, or even a partnership with somebody like the Boys Club or the YMCA to help fund something like this. And then we can, at the same time, you guys are very good about getting grants. If we co-partner with the Boys Club or YW, or YWCA, we can get grants to help pay and maintain these projects. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
My name is Frank Vignatti. I'm from Palm Coast. I too, as the last speaker, had a few comments regarding the spend of the plan and the nine hundred thousand, and it was funny, in my comments, I had the cart before the horse. So it just seems to me that we have not finalized the details of the need for this facility and how it is. I think we have a need. Now, what are the details? I think we're really way far in advance before we get a design concept, before you have your need done. We've done surveys in two thousand and fifteen. We did surveys in two thousand and seventeen. None of these surveys have really been broken apart, coordinated, and looked at to see. You know, you talk about Meals on Wheels. You don't need a facility for Meals on Wheels. They're going to people's homes and for shut-ins. And you're going to use a contractor who uses his own kitchen to do these sort of things. So, you know, you, you need to look at this. So what my suggestion is, that you really need to set up a committee to take a look at the need and the programs. And the programs, you really want to ask your people, would you use it? Not do you want it? Because we all want it. I'd love to have a new Mercedes, but I really can't use a Ford. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Next speaker.
Good morning, Councilman Mayor. John Brady, Palm Coast. And what I'm thinking is, there's a difference between wants and needs. Certainly, we would want this recreational center. Certainly, if we want it, and we had a means of paying for it, fine. But I think we have needs in Palm Coast. Now, I've shared with you pictures of the St. Joseph Trail, where the sidewalk is coming up. It is badly in need of repair. You drive around the city, you see swales, two weeks after rain with water in. It's a breeding ground for mosquitoes. We need to focus on maintenance. That's a need. Building a recreational center? That's a want. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
Denise Calderwood, Palm Coast resident. Thank you very much for having the discussion about, you know, pulling the agenda from the consent agenda. I thought it was a long, a done deal proved way beforehand. I went to the Parks and Recreation Leisure Advisory Board, and they had already had the dates scheduled, and we're talking about it, and talking about it, that it's a done deal, and, and they were informed of that. They haven't had a meeting in about six months, I guess, because of the lack of a, a quorum or participation. because of the lack of a quorum or participation. And I'm sorry, I don't have the dates in front of me. I wasn't ready to go in the history of this. But, you know, that committee is the one, by mission statement, is supposed to be advised and informing you of the information from the citizens' input. And at the last meeting there, we're well over 40 people that were in attendance. And that is because the city has given the $30,000 out for cultural arts, you know, and that is a big deal. That's an economic engine driver, as well as tennis, as well as golf, all those amenities that we have. And we should be very proud of our history because, you know, history, golf and tennis was the history of Palm Coast, Mayor. We did have a nice tennis center. You mentioned Wimbledon and you mentioned the new star of part-time. But we had the Gullicksons here and they lived here full-time and raised a family here and they actually gave me tennis lessons. So we, you know, that whole concept in the future can be a tennis museum, you know, coupled with something. And that would be a good start. And that could be your bathrooms. There is future funding available for that. The City of Flagler Beach pulls it in and so does the Historical Society and that's the Division of Cultural Affairs. And that can be blended with recreational activities. And that's what was discussed with the yacht club as far as your grants for Long Park or whatever, Long Creek Park. Okay? You know, let's go back to the history. And I don't have my paperwork, thanks to me giving it to, you know, our Parks and Recreation Director when it was brand-new, the whole history. And I guess, and I'm going to be guessing and I will tell you, I don't know the dates because I could not review all of my paperwork that I gave Alex. And that was prior to a resolution before the city, for the city hall. 49% of the population of Palm Coast voted to support the amendment that three recreation centers be built, okay? And we had a site plan, a conceptual plan done. One was going to be at Indian Trails, was going to be at Ralph Carter Park. And the other one was going to be on, in Seminole Woods. Those designs were done. There was specifications done. The Parks Advisory Board approved it wholeheartedly. So did the citizens. There was even a budget that was attached. Everything that was shown by Mr. Cote as far as your design and your RFQ. So I think the citizens and the staff of Palm Coast need to go back to the history and pull those shelves, the shelved reports. So thank you very much for not making this one and saving that $100,000. As far as input from the community, I think you've heard over and over again the need and that the community has.
Next speaker.
We just need you all to listen. Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Mr. Landon, our city charter states that we cannot borrow in excess of three years, correct?
If you're going to use property tax, but if you have dedicated funding source, then it makes it clear that you can do that. That's how we do that with utilities, because you have the utility rates that pay for that and not your general taxes.
And we currently do not have a dedicated funding source. I mean, we have an ad lorm tax base that we utilize. We utilize sales tax for our capital projects.
Right.
Or have historically.
In order to fund this center, you're going to have to have a new revenue source. No question about it. Our current, whether it's sales tax or property tax, cannot support this type of facility. That's why it really is a huge project for the community. So that was, that's all part of that discussion, is how are you going to pay for it? Are you going to issue debt for something like this? To set $1 million aside every year? Yes, it's going to be a long time before you're going to be able to build it. But then on top of that, you also have to be concerned and know how you're going to pay for the operation. So, yeah, it's a huge project.
Well, I just want to reference the charter because, I mean, that's important, that we can't just go out and issue a bond without, I mean, necessarily having that. It's written within our language of our charter.
Right.
And that was not discussed, to amend, in our charter discussion.
No, this is, that, it's all part of this. The financing of this is very much a major part of what the discussion has to be.
And let me say, I mean, we had a very fiscally conservative city council that established the city and established this charter. The intent was the theory of, you know, sort of paying as you go to really have and meet the needs of the community, not necessarily the wants at all times. So it's really what you can afford. And that's how you scope out a project. You know, we budgeted for Holland Park renovation, knowing the funds we had allocated for that purpose. The community center was a long-term project to renovate that as well. So the discussions historically by city councils really have been to ensure the fiscal soundness of our city and to watch the dollars wisely. And I think that's important to note. When they were first discussing the establishment of the city in the city charter, there was a lot of debate about that language.
Yes.
And as far, okay, so, you know, a lot of the same comments, going back to borrowing the needs, going out to the public. Again, if the council wants to entertain coming back and looking at this type of facility with public input, I think it's going to take time. And I concur with one of the speakers that says, you know, "I do this in speaking engagements all the time." Well, yeah, I mean, we could do all of these things that residents want. How are you going to pay for it? And that's the bottom line. How are you going to pay for it? These, one time, city councils in Ormond Beach decided that they wanted an indoor recreation facility and they decided to tax the residents to pay for it. So those discussions happen in communities all the time. They happen with residents all the time. And I think it just, it needs to be looked at, at the scale and scope in which we can afford and certainly the revenue source that we would apply to it. And again, the sales tax is a great discussion because it's why the shopping local subject matter comes up at almost every one of our meetings. Shopping local, if we can increase that number every single year as more shops come in line and we support our business community and people are spending dollars here, the dollars come back here. We take those dollars and we spend it on projects that benefit the community. We need to stay focused on that topic and we need to be very, very aggressive in our approach on how to educate the residents on why this is so critical and essential. Again, I'm going to say this. Tiger Outlets in Ormond, I was just with the mayor of Ormond all last week. I think it's fantastic that they have that. But if you want to go improve Ormond Beach community, go spend money in Ormond Beach. If you want to improve roads in St. Augustine, go get your fuel in St. Augustine. But every time you decide to fuel up here and spend money here, it helps us as a council make that decision to help improve your community. So make that decision every single chance you can get. That sales tax and fuel tax is directly applied to these sorts of projects. And the more we can increase it, the better our ability to provide those services to our residents. So we don't have to apply ad lorm taxes all the time for these types of projects. And again, I will say, the operational costs of these types of facilities, we really have to take in consideration. It's one thing to go out to the public and say, "How do you want to spend your money on building capital projects?" It's another thing to have a scale of this type of project and not fully understand or grasp the operational costs and the maintenance that's going to go into that type of project. It's huge. I mean, when I first served on the county commission, coming from an old courthouse to a ginormous new city or county administration building, the cost alone, the FPNL cost alone, were so large I couldn't even wrap my hands around how much it shifted from one year to the next. And so it's got to be a discussion that we always apply when we're looking at projects like this. There's got to be an operational and maintenance component long-term that we're also going to have to apply to ad lorm taxes. So, okay. So do we need a motion to?
I would recommend the council take some action on this. This has been pulled. There's a resolution that is pending for your consideration to approve or to deny or to continue.
Motion to, potential motion to table the issue? Would that be a viable option?
Well, again, it's your discretion. I mean, I've heard the discussion that there's not approval for spending $100,000 at this time, which would support a motion to deny.
Motion to deny agenda consent item number four?
Number four. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. The remainder of the consent agenda items, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on any of those, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move consent agenda.
Moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda? You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin.
Good morning again. George Mayo, Palm Coast. Two things. The right turn lane going northbound on Belt Air at 100, right by Starbucks, is basically 99% completed. I want to thank you for that. I especially want to thank Steve Flanagan for that. I've had many questions over the time and he's been very diligent in replying to me and giving me answers and keeping on top of that project. It has greatly reduced the traffic and it's been something sorely needed. In that regard, originally, if I'm correct, that whole project was supposed to include the left turn lane by the original developer. And then it was said, "Well, that's going to be in phase two." And it was stalled and stalled and to which the city then had to take it over. So that just increased the amount of time that it really took to get done. It's working now. I suggest, should the city get any further project, something similar that includes a right turn lane, a left turn lane, adjusting the street, that that be included in the initial phase rather than having to wait and have the city have to take it over. You know, I think we let him get off the hook and I think the city probably incurred expense that it didn't need to do. Second thing, I've heard people come in here complaining about new houses being built next to their existing house. And I just had a friend that had a similar situation where they come in and the developer building the new house just adds yards and yards of fill and yards and yards of topsoil. Whereas the person I'm familiar with, the house next door was well over a foot above the existing grade. Directly across the street, six months prior to that, another developer built a house, was equal to the existing grade. So it seems like some developers just seem to add yards and yards, maybe to just add on the cost of a house. I don't know. I know the city gives the okay. Everybody gets the permits, okay. You can go and build a house. I think as it is going along, the city needs to go out there and look more diligently at some of these developers and saying, "Wait a minute, the grade is too high." I have heard, like I said, many people come in here and complain, "They just built a house next to me. It's so high, water's running onto my property." So I'm just hoping that the city can look into that and not just say, "Okay, here's the permit to build a house. It's over and done." Then you come out after it's all done and say, "Wait a minute, this is wrong. The elevation is too high and it has to be corrected." It's easier to correct it before it's all done rather than go back and have to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Carr, you spoke at the beginning. We do not have two public speaking. Thank you. Next speaker.
I spoke earlier. I can speak again?
You can speak because you didn't speak of public participation.
One other issue on traffic lights. The traffic light at City Center and East Hampton and Belt Air, the cross-traffic across Belt Air, that light has seemed to shorten. Now there are only like three cars can get through the intersection at any time. I don't know if it's more traffic coming from East Hampton, blocking things up. But I sat through two lights trying to get here this morning and coming straight through on two-town center. The other issue is on a maintenance issue. I was going out to European Village over the last couple of weeks. There's a huge tree limb blocking the bicycle on the, I guess it would be the north side of Palm Harbor Parkway. And it's the only thing I've seen down over the last three weeks is somebody put an orange cone. So I guess somebody wouldn't run into the branch in the middle of the night. But I think something the city should take a look at because it's a huge branch. I mean, it's not a, it's one of, off of those, you know, huge oaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
John Brady again. Good news, that limb has been removed. But I did want to ask a question. I got information for the first three months of the golf course. And according to my math, there was a $77,000 surplus. The expenses were $77,000 less than the income. Is that correct? And if the golf course is making money, why aren't we saying something about it? Thank you.
Next speaker.
Denise Calderwood, Palm Coast. Just another history note. In 1998, the citizens of Flagler County and Palm Coast all got together and spoke about the town center concept. There were charrettes and there were several meetings that Charlie Faulkner pulled together to talk about how we can do economic development and do everything that we are now talking about actively now in town center. And part of that concept plan was a recreation center there. And that's how, obviously, the tennis center wound up, I guess, there on that property at some point. But a site plan was designed and built and an architectural firm did a conceptual drawing of a 30,000-square-foot building, you know, with a gym and two big rooms as well as a senior center wing. And that was proposed for the tennis center complex. But it was going to be done in a collaborative effort with the YMCA of Flagler County and the Police Athletic League of Flagler County, you know, and Family Matters of Flagler. So it was a collaborative effort between three existing not-for-profits. All of those not-for-profits are still here and thriving. The problem with the YMCA is they've been in Flagler County three times and always left because they can't get continued funding to support their efforts. And then, you know, there was a couple of days, I mean, a couple of articles that Dewey was interested in coming back for a fourth time and taking over the Belt Air Swim and Racquet Club, which of course is not owned by you all. But the bottom line is, is that, you know, this council needs to start really thinking about the not-for-profits because they are your community, they are your input. Mayor, when you were on the city, I mean, the county commission, you talked about working or having the county create a not-for-profit so that they could share in the revenues that are available out there. That was a great sound concept of it, but you do have existing not-for-profits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'll close public comments. Mr. Landon, if you could, Mr. Mayor's comments about the left turn lane on Belt Air?
Belt Air.
Yeah. How the developer following it?
Yeah, the whole project was, you know, we gave the developer the option of either incorporating that as part of their project or we would use impact fees. They paid for it via impact fees. That's how we paid for the turn lanes. They decided they did not, they didn't have to do it for their project. And so we made it a city project. But it was paid for by impact fees. It came directly from that shopping center.
So the timing of it had nothing to do with necessarily when it went in. From the developer's perspective, it was the city's decision.
Right. Well, there's certain public improvements that are required. And when they're required, then the developer has to do as part of that. There's others that are not required for that particular project because they're just part of the impact on the streets. And this was one of those that, this was not required directly as a result of the project. And this was one of those, this was not required directly as a result of the project. So it became a city project, because they did not want to do it, they didn't have to do it, but we collected the impact fees and used their impact fees to pay for it. Does that make sense? Hopefully?
And then as far as the fill in the house and going in and assessing that?
Part of this issue is associated with standards of today, to make sure that we are high enough up, is different than they used to be. We pay a lot of attention to this. If there's any specific case that we need to look at, be happy to do that, but, you know, the elevation of the house is part of that review that we do.
Is that a standard from the state guidelines, or are those local?
It's, we have a criteria, it has to be so many, a foot above the freeboard, in other words, what we consider to be the floodline. And that is our local standard. I don't know if it's a state standard or not, but I know.
There's also Florida Building Code and how they compare, Mayor. I don't know specifically, but I did want to say from the timing issue of that, you know, there's different parts during the, it's not like you issue the building permit and then the city, someone from the city goes out after the house is built. I mean, there's different inspections.
I can tell you, according to home builders, that is not the case.
That is not the case. I want to make sure that, my understanding, and I don't do this, but my understanding is, is that there is an inspection at the completion of the foundation, or during the construction of the foundation, for issues like this, but also to make sure that the foundation contains the necessary elements, so that it's sturdy and stable for the duration of the time that it's going to be used.
Traffic lights.
The one, we take a look at it.
Okay.
If it's just a one case and there's different reasons why it might happen just once, but we'll take a look at it.
And is that going through our optimization plan? I know last time around, phase three.
That's one that is part of that.
Okay.
So we can take a look.
All right, that'd be great. The maintenance, the tree limb?
Yes.
Was corrected?
Yep, people in the back are hearing that and it'll be corrected soon.
And the golf course, we know, has had a major turnaround. We have a, frankly, a really great golf administrator out there that is working well with our Parks and Rec Department.
It's doing quite well. I'm not going to tell you that it's going to make money at the end of the year, you know, this is a slow time, but golf course is doing quite well, getting a lot of compliments. And, you know, we're, we'll know come September thirtieth as to how it went for the fiscal year. We have projections right now.
And it's an amenity.
Yep, it's an amenity. We, but Mr. Brady is welcome to continue work with our finance director to keep the numbers together, we'll follow it during budget process.
I think part of the comment there was, the last words from the public was, we should be touting that more. I don't know if those words exactly, but yeah, this should be something we make a big deal to the community to know. We have a course and it's a very nice course and very good condition, and I think it's just something that we should be promoting more than we are now. I'm sorry, you may, I roll a little bit, maybe you.
I, I mean, we promote it, I mean, we, a great deal. If you have any suggestions as to how to promote it more, but you know, it's a, there is that golf niche out there that you have to try to hit that target, but we do radio spots.
What about the headline, Palm Harbor Golf Course Will Fund Fifteen Million Dollar Rec Center? I'm just kidding.
Yes, I'm well aware. If you want to lie, you can tell that lie, because it's not about to, but yeah, no.
Okay. All right, we'll now actually open it up to discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda, council member or Vice Mayor Cuff.
Just one quick, I think we all received an email, and I know this is a continuing problem throughout the city, but when it happens in our parks, it's especially concerning to me about car break-ins. In this case, it's apparently waterfront parking area and the Graham Swamp, I believe, was the other location, and I know we've talked about security cameras, et cetera. I don't remember ever hearing Graham Swamp in that mix, waterfront may have been, because it's more developed, but that, just a comment for something for staff to look at.
Well, let me add to that, because.
Update us, you know.
It is, it is, I believe, happening from kids in the community. If you look at the timing, one of my friends who runs every single day and has a business was hit twice, one at waterfront and then the other Graham Swamp in one week. Car literally smashed in, and then twenty-five hundred dollars at the mall was spent on her credit card. This is happening in the morning and late afternoon, again, which sort of tells me that it's probably youth-driven, to where, I don't know many people that go to the mall to spend twenty-five hundred dollars unless they're not doing anything, you know, during the day after committing some serious crimes in our community. So frankly, I think it's very upsetting. These are not people that are leaving their car doors unlocked in their driveway and having weapons and laptops that we see in a lot of our neighborhood watch meetings. This is something that's being very targeted in our trails, at our trailheads. These are locked items. These are cars that are being broken into by breaking the glass and windows of vehicles. And it's happening because there's not a lot of people around and it's somewhat remote. And I think we need to take this very, very seriously. This is, again, this is victimizing people that are utilizing our trails in a healthy manner, that are locking their belongings in their glove box, and when it's happening two times, I mean, I, you know, I've spoken to people all last night about this that are runners, I mean, you know, they've never seen this happen. These are runners that have run our trails for years and run marathons and represent this community in Boston, running Boston marathons. This is a shame and we need to address it. You know, to Bob's point, I don't know if we just collaborate with the sheriff, Mr. Landon, and take this very seriously, but I'd like to have a follow-up report on what we're going to do with the sheriff's department and security and increase patrols at certain times that we know this has been targeted.
I think that the parks are, because, you know, we're the city and the parks are purview, but this happened in my neighborhood Monday morning. There were at least five cars with their windows smashed in when I got up to do my morning run. So if, perhaps it's a spillover, perhaps it is youth out because school's out, but if there's a possibility that this is the same group of people, then, you know, we have an opportunity, if they're congregating more frequently in the parks areas, that this is something that we should look at as a larger picture throughout the city, I think.
Well, I mean, the neighborhood watch groups, I will say, Sergeant Lutz does an extraordinary job at going through these neighborhood watch meetings and lets them know what's happening in their neighborhood. And he's been very proactive in saying, lock your car doors, don't leave anything in your vehicle in your driveway. At night, they're going to be burglarized, because eighty percent of the break-ins in people's driveway are happening, eighty percent, because people aren't locking their car doors. And several of them have weapons inside their cars with unlocked doors. It's happening, and quite frankly, a startling amount. And every time I go to the neighborhood watch meetings, he's saying, please. But this, I agree, we need to look at it as a whole, but this is very, very targeted. I mean, this is, this is happening at our trailheads, and I don't know who's doing it, but I want it, I want us as a council to direct our city manager to take a very, very aggressive approach and make it very clear that we're not going to tolerate this type of behavior, and anything we can do to counteract it, we're going to do.
That includes security cameras and then fixed LPRs. We could probably work with Sheriff Staley to get license plate readers there. That waterfront park is much easier to secure than houses, you know, breaking into a driveway is much more difficult to catch somebody. There's only one way in and one way out of waterside parks. So fixed LPRs, so into every car that goes in, and then we have a sign shop, we can produce some nice signs to very much make perpetrators aware that they are on camera. And between those two things, we should be able to identify at least the vehicle and potentially figure out a picture of who's doing it. So those are really the means that we can accomplish at our facilities, but in the city, it'll be a little bit harder. But hopefully, it is the same people and we eliminate them to one place and that actually gets rid of them in another.
It seemed to me, in one week, they went from waterfront and a few days later went to Graham Swamp Trailhead, both in the mornings, both early in the mornings. It seems very targeted.
Totally. It seems like they said, we got a really good bounty from the first rental place, let's go find another one. Yeah, disturbing.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we have over, we have a very active running group. It's great that we have the trails we have, but it's, we have to ensure that these are safe. And it's one thing to have the sheriff patrol areas for criminal activity, and I just think we need to make them aware that this is happening. And this is, this is serious.
Couple of programs. First of all, yes, we'll immediately, this is the first I've heard about the trailhead break-ins, but we'll immediately work with the sheriff to target those areas that have been hit. So we have surveillance and we have ways of hopefully catching the bad guys. And that will happen immediately. We also have on your workshop agenda for the next workshop, which is the last Tuesday of the month, a proposal to put together a security plan for, not just our parks, but all our facilities. We're hearing more and more about this. That's where you get into security cameras, you know, there's a lot, it's, you know, monitoring versus just recording it versus other devices to be able to do it together. We're hearing enough about this, yeah, it's a major concern, and we're trying to approach it in a comprehensive fashion, so prevention is best, but then also being able to catch them if they do it. But that's the big picture. Immediately, we'll work on these areas that have been targeted to see if we can't catch those.
And I just found this out yesterday, I mean, so, I mean, this is, this again is new, that's why I'm thinking, it's summertime and it's happening, but, you know, I have a friend who has that new Ring doorbell and it's a camera, and he was away in California and he was showing me how it works. And we have a lot of capabilities today that we really can be more proactive and catch these people and send a very clear message that this under no way is going to be tolerated, this council's going to take it extremely seriously. And if it is youth, then the parents, I'm hoping that the sheriff's department can put the parents on notice that, you know, please make sure that they're taking it as seriously as we are.
Mayor, I feel I need to comment on a couple of things, because it was said that Mr. Landon needs to make sure we're notified. Believe me, Mr. Landon makes sure I'm notified when these happen. And he wants results and he wants feedback, and we normally give that to him. So that's already, nothing that needs to be made clear to my boss. Couple of things on this. We do, we are aware of it and the sheriff is, and we have our, as you know, our weekly crime apps meeting Wednesday, sometimes on Thursday because of the move, and these things are discussed. The ones in the neighborhood, yeah, they probably are juveniles, we do look for the cameras, we are reallocating our patrol based on what's brought up at crime app. And we, in crime apps, got to explain to our sheriff what we're doing to prevent these, and we're held accountable. The ones that you're talking about at these trailhead parks, they are more of like the gypsy-type things, because we not only just talk with ourselves, we talk with St. John's, we talk with Fallujah, we even talk with Jacksonville, and they're having the same thing. So we coordinate all our efforts and all our intelligence. And pretty much, sooner or later, we catch them, because somebody gets them on surveillance and once one county catches them, pretty much they all do. So we're aware of it. So, and Mr. Landon's, you don't have to tell me, boss, I'll be on it, I'll be reporting back to you, and I'll be mentioning it to sheriff, and it'll be brought up at crime apps Wednesday. But the, Sergeant Lutz is right, I can't tell you how many times, lock your cars, lock your cars. And we are already talking with the sign shops where they're making up some signs for us, like in the county where, you know, prevention-type things and all of this stuff. So it's being looked at and we'll keep you abreast.
Thank you.
All right.
Vice Mayor Cuff, is that all you have?
I think so.
Counselor Leffler.
Nothing worth me.
Okay.
I just have one thing. I was wondering about the lights, like, I know you said you were going to call, and I look at the form you send us every week saying, FPL is still having in production or hesitant, something, and I know you said, maybe we should call, and I'm thinking, maybe one of us should call and check on it, because I haven't seen anything happen in the last three weeks.
I got, I got an update just yesterday, or maybe late last week. We now have the agreement from FPNL, they've approved it. The conduit that will go under the street and the sidewalk is, we will include in the sidewalk. That agreement will come in very shortly, so it will be coordinated with the path that's already, we have the contract with and will be under construction. So the path and lights will all be happening here shortly. But I'll keep you, I'll keep you updated and try to make sure that that agreement, we get it signed and they get it on their schedule as quickly as possible.
I have a few things. I attended a conference last week in Kansas City. It was hosted by the Kaufman Foundation on Entrepreneurship. They host mayors annually to bring us around from the country to do best practices, how we can foster this dialogue for the entrepreneurial spirit in our communities. And a couple of things came out of it, and I'd like for us to discuss it at the workshop when Winn can be prepared and maybe give her report. We were designated as an opportunity zone, which is a great opportunity for us, but the financial arm from the federal side had indicated that it's great to have a designation, but if we don't have an opportunity zone plan that has been adopted by this council and actual plan of how we're going to utilize the opportunity zone, by January first, we will not be eligible for any type of funding whatsoever. So we have to get the opportunity zone plan in place before January first and adopted by this council. So just wanted to get that on your radar. And actually, I spoke to Winn briefly, who was at the conference, and it was interesting because none of that was relayed when we were setting up these opportunity zones to anyone. And other mayors were equally surprised that had the designation. It's, again, it's one thing to have a great sort of tool, but if you're not really utilizing it, you know, it's nothing more than a name. The other thing that came out of this that I think is equally of importance to note is the fact that, they said, you know, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be aspiring to be, you know, Silicon Valley. And the reason they said that was because Silicon Valley housing prices are astronomical and everyone's sort of going, house broke, because nobody can afford anything. But to really capitalize on what we are. And one of the things that they highlighted at the conference was diversity and inclusion in your communities for entrepreneur spirits. And occurred to me what's really special about Palm Coast is our cultural diversity. We obviously have a very strong contingent of members of the Portuguese community, Hispanic community, African-American community, Russian community, Colombian community, and it really helps us really stand out, frankly. And if you think of someone opening up like a Portuguese bakery, how much that takes to do that. And so when we're talking about an entrepreneurial ecosystem, they said the success of communities that truly do that, bring everybody together and create a network. So the Portuguese owner of the bakery tells someone to go down the street and do their dry cleaning at a small business owner, and it's a sort of a shared resource and experience. And I'd like for us to really come up with a strategy on how we're going to capitalize on our cultural diversity, using the entrepreneurial ecosystem, and be very, very methodical and deliberate on how we create that dialogue and capitalize on the fact that we are so diverse. It does enrich our community, but it, hopefully, it adds value to those that are looking to come in and open their doors and their business in our community, that we've created this network, this social network. It's very organic, but we do it in a way that has meaning and value. So that I want to include in the workshop on how we're going to look at that. And I would love for us to have entrepreneurs that are actually successful in the community represent that diverse group and maybe be part of the discussion on how we create this ecosystem and network. And it has to be, it has to be successful from within our community. It's one thing to be strategic, to say we want to target technology firms to coming in, but I think we need to have dual roles on how we focus on the success of our local businesses here and add value to them by being successful and adding employment, but also to really highlight what is so unbelievably unique and special about Palm Coast. And I really do think it comes from within, and I think it comes from our natural entrepreneurs that are here. So I'm looking to have representation from different parts of our community, be part of that conversation. If that's agreeable, to have that conversation on the workshop. Yeah, good.
Mayor, if I could, the next workshop is really busy and long. So if we could do it, the first workshop in August, I think that would be better as far as timing. That's okay?
Yep. The trail and the crime was brought up. Another thing to add to the entrepreneur workshop, they talked about a flexible time of employees. They mentioned, which I thought was interesting, AARP has a program that they offer to seniors that are looking to go back and maybe work a few hours a week somewhere in their community, and they match that with the employer that is looking for that flexible time schedule, that maybe they only want to go back into an office and maybe they have a skill set. So if we could also work with that program, it was interesting to have someone from AARP come up and stand on a stage and talk about entrepreneurship, and we're all sort of a bit confused at first, and then we realized that there are a lot of successful entrepreneurs that start up businesses later in life, and it's one because they have an idea and a concept, and we can support that as well. So I'm hoping that that gets added to the discussion. And that's actually all I have for items. So I will move. So I will move to discussion by City Attorney of Matters Not on the Agenda.
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Discussion by City Manager of Matters Not on the Agenda.
A few fun things. It's Recreation Month and tonight is Food Truck Tuesday from 5:00 to 8:00 here at Central Park. The BMX Tricksters are the performance, the people performing tonight, they were here last year, they were very popular. If you have any kids or teenagers that like to see people fly through the air on bicycles, this would be a good night to come out. Then tomorrow night is Park and Play Night at Holland Park. All sorts of free activities for families tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Holland Park. Saturday, this Saturday, we have the Tour de Palm Coast. That's a guided bicycle tour through St. Joe's Trail along the intercoastal. It starts at the community center and that starts at 8:00 a.m. this Saturday morning. A lot of other things happening at the pool and the community center, so go to the website and check it all out. Few business items. First of all, once again, our Finance Department and Budget Coordinator Lena Williams received the Government Finance Officers Association Budget Presentation Award for what we had last year. Excellent segue into the next subject, and that is that we have a budget workshop following this business meeting. We need about 15 minutes to switch over to the workshop room, so if we could start the workshop at 10:45. On that agenda is just the general fund budget, preliminary general fund budget, and then start talking about the trim rate. Because the trim rate, which is the maximum mileage rate that you have to set by the first part of August, we'll have a special meeting before your workshop on August 31st to actually set that trim rate. That does not approve the budget, it just sets that maximum rate that you can't go above once you announce what that's going to be. But we'll go over that more during the workshop. So, but wanted to make sure we announced that we do have a workshop following this meeting at 10:45 and then a special meeting on the trim rate August 31st, just prior to the regular workshop time at 9:00 a.m. So Mayor, that's all I have.